Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passed. Consent agenda, is there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passed. The public is now invited to be heard on matters and on the agenda, limited five minutes. Is there anyone that wants to speak? Please say your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Amy Mc- Recognized.
We need a name and address stated, John.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
My name's Brian Paulson, 206 Forest Street, Southwest. Speaking here tonight because I have some concerns about the statutory issues with the sale of the bonds and the SIP. So in your packet, I handed out there, just the first thing we don't have to go over, but it's a statutory requirement. So the highlighted portion, the B is for the bonds, and then the second page you'll see for the capital improvement plan, they both have a requirement for a public hearing. And tonight, later on, you'll see in the packet, one of the items that says that pursuant to the resolution adopted by the city council on March 17th, 2025, following a duly noticed public hearing, there was not a hearing. So then this packet I just referenced, you have for tonight, I didn't put it in the packet I provided. So then the next page on there, you'll see the public notice from the newspaper. So I have here, February 27th. There's public notices, the highlighted, it's included in your packet. So that was for both the bonds and the SIP, which I think they should have been separate, but regardless. So that was the public notice. The next page, you'll see the meeting agenda from the March 17th meeting, and after the notice, you have 14 to 28 days to have the public hearing. The only meeting that the city held during that period was the March 17th meeting, which is also noted in the public notice. You'll see that they did have an item on there for the capital improvement plan, and they had nothing listed under public hearings. Next page, you'll see the meeting minutes from that meeting, and there is the number seven, police station capital improvement plan, with the two resolutions that were approved. Nowhere in there does it say that there's a public hearing, and if you would like to trust me, I did watch the video again. There was no public hearing during that portion, and then also during the minutes, public hearings, six o'clock, none were listed. So then the next item on there, I have the resolution, which in 1.02 references before the approval of the plan and issuance of any general obligation bonds under the act, the city is required to hold a public hearing on the plan and issuance of bonds. And in 1.05, it says, on this date, would be the date of the meeting, the council held a public hearing on the plan and issuance of bonds, so on and so forth, which that was never held. And also in the packet from Ellers, you know, building community is what we do. I know what they're doing is their bread and butter. And in here, it even says, council must hold a public hearing regarding the issuance of SIP bonds to obtain public comment on the matter. And in my opinion, they were sold under false pretense. So I'm not sure what you guys want to do with this information, but I'm just here. And it's something I noticed, I think it's a serious violation for 12 some million dollars of bonds that we sold. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody online?
Jackie, you got some?
Sorry, I didn't understand what he was asking, sorry.
Oh.
I'm Jackie Tokolsky. I'm at 107 Columbus Avenue North, and what I want to address is the parking from 107 Columbus Avenue North to 115. It's a residential street right across from St. Wentz School. This is several pictures showing in front of my house where vehicles have been parked. I've owned that residence for three and a half years. See, there's descriptions of the vehicles, the parking, and what's included on the back, just some... Got a couple of police reports here. I do call once in a while when I can't get them to move, can't locate the drivers. I was called a very nice name by one person.
When was that?
That was the last one, it's in there. I asked her to move her vehicle because I needed to go to work, and she said it was not important. So this is the area right here. My house is the X, and this is the area in concern. I've talked to Matt and Brenda about this. The houses are very close. If there was a fire, the... It's gonna jump. I don't know if you're aware of this. I've taken fire classes. I was an EMT. You have 11 seconds to get out of a room when a fire starts, and it's gonna jump from one room to another room, which is no time at all. That's why people perish. 11 seconds. There's a house fire here. It's gonna go from one house to another. There is... Some of these houses don't even have driveways, so the street is the only place for these vehicles to park. And St. Wentz has their own private parking lot. They do not want to park there. I parked there when I worked at the hospital. I got three orange cones behind my vehicle. They asked me to move, and that's how they asked me to move, and that's when Columbus Avenue was under assessment, road assessment. They do not allow anyone else to park there, only their faculty members, but their faculty members can park anywhere in this town. 280 days plus, nine hours a day, I have someone parked in front of my house. I cannot use my front door. I'm an independent contractor, can access my front door. So I would like... I don't know how to fix this. I've tried a lot of different options, a lot of different ones. I don't know if you noticed one of the pictures in here, it's a school bus, and it's parking, and then it's also another bus. That street is used by the ambulance. It's one of the main... This one right here. The ambulance goes to the hospital. Look at how much they're gonna have to slow down to get down to that street to get to the hospital with your loved ones. Look at how tight that is. Every second counts. Every morning when I open my shades, I've got vehicles parked in front of my house. This red truck was a contractor that was sitting in front of my driveway parked for three hours. Then when he was told by the police that he can't block my driveway, then he parked in front of my house, blocking my house, my front door for three days, and he spilled some kind of white paint or something on the road and stained the road. I don't know if it's some kind of a joke or what it is. I don't know what we can fix it. If there's some type of, when they do, like around the schools for sports parking, around the residential areas, I'm not sure. I would just like it to be fixed and be a little bit more appreciative, you know? I don't know. It is residential. It needs to be treated with a little bit more respect. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Ricky, Jackie.
City engineer project update. Matt, are you doing that, or are we getting Chris online?
Well, wait, are we gonna address?
Yeah, should we discuss that?
A public hearing for this part of the meeting, we do not normally.
Yeah.
We'll just hear.
We can talk at the end if you like.
Okay.
But certainly, we wanna address it.
Okay.
Matt?
Good. Good. Just so you know, the 2024 project has a bunch of improvements that need to be done. We call it on a punch list. They should be out this week. Starting that punch list, that's some of that stuff we talked about, Sean, your concerns, hopefully those start getting addressed starting this week.
Did you let the neighbors know, or the people that were...
We sent weekly updates.
Oh, you did, okay.
And send them out to anybody that signed up, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, this year's project, 2025 project's moving along really well, especially with the nice weather. They're still working on Lincoln Avenue North, water and sewer and storm, for the most part, are done up to Second Street, and they kinda jumped north of Second Street. So that's moving along really nice. 12th Avenue Southeast by Settlers Park, they worked on the sidewalk all of last week, poured on Friday, and I haven't been out there today, but I know they were gonna be out there again today, so 12th Avenue is... Should be completed by the end of the week. That's kinda what I got, unless you guys have any questions.
I got questions, either Josh or you over there, right in front of Jackie, so she kinda didn't mention it, but the boulevard there, it's down a good inch from the soil, and the grass itself, I have no idea how you're gonna mow that grass when the sidewalk is...
In front of, on Columbus you're talking, in front of your property?
They already reported once, but it sunk. So between H&R Block and my house, there was actually another house there. They actually did the plumbing and the sewer there because they found really old brick there, and it sunk already once, and I don't know what they're gonna do, if they're gonna have to pour that again, the sidewalk, because it sunk again this winter.
Yep, I'll take a look at it. It's still under warranty, so.
And I would look at that whole boulevard, all the way down Columbus until the hospital.
Yep, definitely will.
Thank you.
Anything else, Matt or Josh? Okay, next item, Josh, do you want to take that?
Uh, yeah, I will let Becky certainly take this. This would be the Series 2025 A Police Station Bond Sale Results, and she can share those with you all.
Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers. Maybe I have a procedural question. Do, based on the public comment, I don't have answers for that right now. I would be happy to go and speak with the city's attorney if there are questions before you act on this, or would you like to move forward on acting on it?
I guess, let's, I mean, let's share.
Okay.
The information, and we can go from there.
Okay. So as you know, we took bids this morning in our office for the Series 2025 A Bonds for the 10 million. You'll see the number changed, but 10,225,000 general obligation capital plan bonds for the new police station. We did receive four bids, and before I get into that, I do wanna cover one thing regarding your rating. We did a rating call with Standard and Poor's, and this rating applied to both of the bond issues. The complete report is in the packet for the 25A Bonds. But I do wanna take just a couple minutes and highlight a couple things, and I can answer any questions. First, I will say congratulations. Standard and Poor's did assign its double A long-term rating to the city's, both the Series A and the Series B bonds that were sold today. In addition, they affirmed the city's double A rating for all of the city's outstanding general obligation debt. And again, the report details a lot more of what supports that rating, but I wanna start with saying congratulations. That always is a testament to the work that you as the council and also the staff has done for managing the city and the finances. Standard and Poor's specifically calls out the city maintaining high reserves and seeing a strong population and market value growth in recent years as one of the factors for continuing with the double A rating. They also talk about the stability and predictability to the city's financial performance. The rating further reflects their assessment of the city's growing local economy, and during the call, we talked about the increase in market value and some of the new developments that are currently under construction or that have been proposed for future years. Standard and Poor's calls out the available reserves that have been sustained above 60% of revenues, and their expectation that the city will continue with its consistent financial position. And then they talk about the financial management framework, and that is a metric that Standard and Poor's uses that includes, in their words, proactive policies and practices that encompass your comprehensive budgeting process, the reporting that the staff provides the council, your long-term capital planning, the investment policies, and then again, your fund balance, and it does go on from there. So with that, again, just congratulations on maintaining that double A rating from Standard and Poor's. So with that, as I mentioned, we did receive four bids for this issue. Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin was the low bid. They had a bid or a true interest cost of 4.4%, and the true interest cost includes the interest rate and then factors in the cost of issuance and some of the fees connected with issuance of the bonds, and it is the standard metric to award debt issues. When I was here about a month or so ago, we had estimated about 4.8%, so it is lower than the estimate. I also wanna call out, though, as I mentioned, the bond size did change. We had anticipated issuing $10,430,000. We did receive a premium bid on this, which means that we received more funding than what was needed, and with that, we were able to then reduce the bond size because it was not needed to fund the project. So with the new bond size of $10,225,000, it saved or provided a difference of about $1 million less than what we were anticipating for principal and interest when I was here about a month ago. I do also wanna call out one more thing on this issue, and we were directed to use the $380,000 in cash from the building fund for this. I just wanna point out, if there are specific questions on that, $320,000 of that cash would be used to pay the interest payment that is due on February of 2026, and then that balance of $60,000 was applied to reduce the bond issue. So that's how that was applied. With that, there are details in there, in your packet, with all of the bids that were received. There is a source and uses with the updated debt service schedule, and then there also is updated tax impacts after that for various valued homes and commercial properties.
Do you wanna go right into the next bond issue?
Uh, I guess let's discuss this one first, and then if there are any questions regarding this one in particular, I guess. And then if you'd like to dive into the next one, we certainly can, but any vote should probably happen individually.
Yes, there are two different votes for tonight.
And Scott's not on the horn somewhere?
Uh, nope, I can certainly try to call him if you would like, but I guess I'd leave that up to the council at this point.
Why delay the vote on this stuff?
How long is the bid good for?
The underwriters would anticipate knowing tomorrow morning if you move forward with accepting it.
Rick, what is your concern that...
Um, we are gonna get the vote on it, right, tonight?
That was the intent, yes, was to vote tonight.
Okay, and then this has nothing to do with this?
I believe, so I believe Mr. Paulson's argument was that these bonds were sold illegally and cannot be approved, but that would be up to the council as to how they would want to use that information that he has provided.
Yeah, without Scott telling us not to vote on it, I am more comfortable sticking to the agenda and voting on it. I don't know about you guys.
I'm moving forward.
I think that Mr. Paulson brought up some very good arguments that maybe we are acting in haste. So I know that they're looking forward to an answer tomorrow, but in reality, how long is this?
So in reality, they... It is standard or typical that they would hold their bid for the day. It is really based on where the market is today. So they would accept a... Basically, if you're... I don't want this to sound like a threat, but if you do not take action today, we cannot guarantee the rate that you have. If you choose to move forward with awarding that, then this rate would be the rate. I recognize there are a couple of questions that we may wanna check with Scott. If you do choose to deny the bids or not award them, then we could go back and resell them, or we could work with Baird and negotiate and see if we can keep that interest rate, but I cannot guarantee that, because again, it really looks... The underwriters look at where the market is today, and it changes from day to day.
Right. So have you ever been in a situation where something like this has arisen, where it had been approved, and then all of a sudden, legal counsel says that we in fact did do something wrong and that we awarded illegally? Are we... What does that do? I know you're not an attorney, but have you seen a situation?
I have had...
Are we locked into this?
I have had situations where councils have not approved, but I have not run into the situation. And I guess if there are questions or concerns, it would be something I would want your city attorney to.
Right.
Way in on.
I understand.
Let me see.
I guess is that something you guys would like me to check on? I mean, I will certainly give a call if the council would like to.
We could just do it and then call the vote. I mean, that way he can opt out of it.
I'm against the project anyway, so I'm a no vote. So I mean, if you three think you're gonna vote yes, then...
I'm good with it if she's...
I just don't want you to get us in a situation that we've accepted the money and then legally we did something wrong and in fact, we can't.
Well, I would hate to not take action and then tomorrow find out that there was the appropriate hearings.
Yeah, I would too. You know, this isn't anything new. We do these every year for street projects and other buildings and whatnot. And I guess I don't recall if we had public hearings or not, or if they were required or what, but I think, given the information that Mr. Paulson provided, that it made me think about it, that maybe we're doing something out of the norm, but...
I will also say that, and again, this is ultimately a council decision. If you do move forward with approving it this evening, the closing date is scheduled at the end of May, and if we needed to adjust that to have some additional time or resolve any concerns, there is some time. Again, I would need to talk with your legal counsel to know exactly what I mean by saying that.
Have you ever seen a city approve something and then not close on it? Again, I know you're not an attorney, you're not giving us legal advice.
Yeah. I have, in my experience, I've not... I have not been in a situation where they have not closed. There have been situations, excuse me, where the closing has been delayed for different, a variety of reasons.
Have you finished explaining number seven? Because we could make that resolution right now if you wanna.
I just wanna make a couple of comments.
Okay.
I certainly, as Sean mentioned, I get... My interest peaked when Brian presents information like this, but it's certainly not anything I could reasonably digest in a matter of minutes, let alone read it that quickly. So then I kinda fall back on the process that we followed, and Josh, I understood that our attorney's been involved in this throughout the process and has given us approval to move forward, in a sense, by being involved in the process. And our professional financial consultant's been involved in the process and has deemed it acceptable to do what we've done. So I guess I would be interested just to, if you think it's possible, to call Scott to get assurance that he feels okay with it, if we can do that.
Yeah, I mean...
And entertain a pause in the meeting if you think you need time for it.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly try to get him on the phone if the council wants to.
But regardless of that, I guess I, just based on the information that's provided in front of me, I guess I'd pursue it because there's more risk than not in my mind than doing it, but based on the information that's in front of me anyway. So if you feel that's an option, I would entertain a...
Give him a recess?
A recess for a minute or 15 minutes?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I'll call for a recess.
Okay.
I'm, uh- I'm, uh- I'm, uh- I'm, uh- I'll be with you.
Okay, Scott is in another meeting right now, so I've been texting him trying to get responses. We certainly see that the meeting was noticed at this point. And you can kind of see who was at the meeting without doing further investigation. He says I can't tell exactly whether a hearing was had. His response was that he would recommend approving now and if we have to do a redo on the hearing or that sort of thing, that that can certainly be done, as Becky said, through delaying the closing of the bonds. That was Scott's response.
Any other questions of Josh?
No, I'd like to make the resolution two five dash zero five dash zero five dash zero one, police station bond sales.
Motion been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty five oh five oh five oh one, awarding the sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, series two thousand twenty five A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed three to one. Next item? Josh?
Uh, yes, so this next item would be then for the twenty twenty five B, which is the bond sale for the street utility project taking place this summer.
So again, related to the series twenty twenty five B, you will notice this dollar amount also changed and is four million six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Again, this was issued for the public improvements and then there is a small piece for about a hundred thousand dollars for equipment at the golf course. For this, I talked about the rating, so it also carries the double A rating from Standard and Poor's. On this one, we did receive three bids. Again, Baird out of Milwaukee was the low bid with a true interest cost of three point seven eight percent. We had estimated about four point two six percent, so it was significantly lower than the estimate, about fifty basis points. With this one, because we were able to reduce, we also received a premium and were able to reduce the bond size. And so with that, it is about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars less in total costs because of that premium bid and the way the final cost of issuance came in. With that, again, you will see the details on the bids in there and then the details for the breakdown. With that, again, as a reminder, we did plan to pay or we are paying for the sanitary sewer portion with cash from the utility fund, then bonded for both the water and the storm pieces of that. We are estimating that the levy is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the first years until the piece of equipment is paid off and then it is reduced to roughly two hundred and fifteen thousand for the balance of it. And again, that is the net levy piece after the utility revenue writes down the levy and then after the assessments come in as projected. With this one, I am happy to answer questions, but we are recommending awarding to Baird with the true interest cost of three point seven eight percent.
So I just because of Bruce's banking history, I asked him why the difference in the bond interest rates. Is it solely due because this one's a fifteen year and the other one's a thirty year or?
I think there are a couple pieces of it. One is the difference in time from fifteen to fifteen years to thirty years makes a big difference. Well, with with longer term debt, we typically see a higher interest rate.
You do, okay.
So I think that that is probably the main driver of that and that is very common. I would have been surprised if they would have come in at about the same rate.
Okay. It doesn't really have anything to do with the dollar amount, that one was ten point four million and one?
That that can sometimes have an impact on the interest rate, but I would say the term of it probably impacts more than the dollar amount.
Okay.
A ten million dollar issue for ten or fifteen years likely would have seen a lower interest rate.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, is there a resolution number for this one?
Uh, this one would be?
Twenty five zero five zero five.
Zero two.
Twenty five oh five oh five oh two.
Any other comments you wanted to make?
Um, I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to take additional questions. I don't have any.
Questions, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty five zero five zero five zero two, approving the sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty five B for street and utility uses.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Becky.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Never spent fifteen million dollars so quick. How much? Almost fifteen? It was fifteen.
I'm eleven, resolutions, conditional use permit. You speaking on that, Josh?
Oh, yes, I will take this. Ken had a band concert to attend this evening. So this is a conditional use permit for Bevcom to allow exterior storage at their new location that they are constructing out at the industrial park on Sixth Street Northwest. A little bit of background, Bevcom did purchase this lot, which is six oh five Sixth Street Northwest in the industrial park back in December of twenty twenty four. They intend to build a structure that is roughly eight thousand square feet to act as an office shop and warehouse with an eighty by a hundred and twenty foot fence for exterior storage on the north side or back of the lot for storage of spools of underground ducting and conduit. The property is owned I one light industrial and in this district, exterior storage is listed as a conditional use. The property, though, to allow exterior storage must meet the following screening requirements. A single row of deciduous or evergreen trees with a minimum height of eight feet and a diameter of two point five inches to be spaced forty feet around the perimeter of the property abutting commercial or industrial districts. And the fence must be visually appealing and cohesive with the exterior principal structure. So it must generally match. Staff does recommend that the fence be a chain link fence that is six feet tall with vinyl slats for a minimum of seventy five percent opacity. The color of the slat should be similar to the siding of the proposed warehouse so that they match. These screening conditions are very similar to what was provided to Bricks Boatworks on the west side of them there in the industrial park. And there will be about two hundred and thirty eight square feet of office space and seventy seven hundred square feet of warehousing space with this, which means that a minimum of nine parking spaces are required for them. So here's kind of just a pullback of the lot. As you can see, there are, there were three general lots remaining in the industrial park, all zoned industrial, and they are the easternmost of those yet to be built on lots. Ultimately, you can see the, this is kind of their parking area and drive through with their proposed building and the fenced fenced in area will be here on kind of the north side. They are then proposing those trees that meet the tree requirement around the storage here, both up against the parking and then as well as well as along the perimeter. And just kind of some general shots of what it looks like right now. So this did go to planning commission and planning commission also recommended approval of conditional use permit number one twenty twenty five to allow exterior storage in the light industrial district at six oh five Sixth Street Northwest with the findings and conditions that are listed in your draft resolution. I will certainly stand for any questions you may have.
I'll just move it, so moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty five oh five oh five oh three, resolution of the new Brick City Council approving conditional use permit C one dash two thousand twenty five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Josh, next?
Uh, yes, I will let Bruce Reimers take this next one.
I'll take the question at least that pertains.
That pertains to the utilities portion of it. So it was brought to my attention in regards to bulk water sales. In other words, this is water sales to contractors, primarily seating companies and or contractors that are using water to do excavations around town. The power lines east of town here is a good example of it. Our hydro seating companies that purchase water from us. It was brought to my attention by actually some of the communities around us that our water rates were considerably less than kind of the going rate. I brought this to the attention of the utilities commission and they decided that we should raise our rates to the thirty five dollars per thousand effective and upon approval of the city council. Josh, were you going to take the?
Yeah, I can take the other one. Currently, if you were to remodel your bathroom, we do require a couple different permits. And with, obviously with a couple different of those permits, we got a few different fees that go with it. We are looking at just simplifying that to while you will still need to get a building permit and a plumbing fee, that it would just be a flat fee to try to make the process simpler for people who are coming in to remodel their bathroom. And so we are recommending a flat fee of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten dollars plus the state surcharge for those reviews.
What's the amount of the state surcharge?
Uh, I believe that depends since it is a plumbing permit. I'm not entirely sure what that is off the top of my head. I can shoot Ken a text here real quick.
No, it's not. I can ask him some other time. Just curious.
Yeah.
Or why there is even a state.
Yeah, why there's a state surcharge. Uh, so I believe, yeah, plumbing permits in the state of Minnesota have to go through the state, at least in some sort of review, I believe, and that would be the state's.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The only one I do is the, I understand charging thirty five dollars for private companies and whatnot that are using our water, but I'm worried what this is going to do to the golf course. I see that they're part of that rate increase from eight fifty to thirty five. I don't much, how many thousands of gallons that the golf courses use or uses, but I'm a little concerned at what that cost is going to do to the budget that we've already approved.
John, I can clarify that. The golf course is on a standard metered water consumption rate, so it does not affect the golf course. This is only for contractors that purchase water for in tanker trucks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw the yellow and you're right, that's bulk water charge.
Yeah.
The golf course is right above it, so that's four sixty five per.
That stays the same.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, I looked at that wrong.
I didn't realize we actually, people actually did that, backed up a tank truck and filled it up a hydrant. And it's a dedicated hydrant and a.
Actually, we do a couple of spots in town and then we've got a couple fill stations on our city buildings as well.
Right.
Any other questions?
They do use fire hydrants, all right, I mean.
Designated only, so we have metering on them.
The, well, so like the one by Coburn's when I see truck?
Correct.
That's one of them?
Correct.
Okay, so I just, you're aware of that, so nobody's doing it illegally.
Yeah, we have one there and we have one over by the church on the west side of town.
Okay.
And does. Go ahead.
Does your staff have to be present?
No, it's done on an honor system and then we have forms there that they fill out. Obviously, they do have to be, we do training with them and then we also have them go through the process of the proper filling, so, yep. And and we have to put our backflow prevention and everything on those individual sites to protect the public water system.
Thank you.
And I noticed a lot of the contractors go over to that, the fire hydrant over by the tin house over there on Second, Second Street Northwest, right over there across from recycling, cardboard recycling?
Fire department?
Or no, it's, there's a fire hydrant and all the contractors that have been doing these roads, it's.
Oh, that would, that would be for our construction projects.
That was in the past.
Yeah. It's not set up this year, but sometimes we will move them around for large construction projects that are for the city.
Oh, yeah, but you did meter, I noticed that over these, all these site streets, you did meter all that?
We did have a site for the, for the contractors for the CIP projects.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve?
I'll approve a resolution twenty five zero five zero five zero for the fee schedule amendment.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Josh?
Uh, yeah, next item, I guess jumping down into general business, talking city hall hours. I know that as I shared last week, or last meeting, this has been on the city's, city council's visioning document for a few years now. And so I was bringing it forward so we could potentially act on it this year. The city council did vote to table it, though. They wanted to hear some of Mayor Jerk's ideas. He is currently on vacation this week, enjoying some time with his family. But he'd shared those ideas with me before he left. And the two kind of things that he thought of were to keep city hall hours as they are, but allow employees to kind of adjust their hours that still provide for coverage at city hall throughout the hours, throughout the summer. And in the same vein, even taking that so far as to possibly working for ten hour shifts throughout the week as long as coverage happened. So as I kind of stated in the memo, some of those ideas have actually currently been in use or been used at various times throughout the last few years. Department had certainly worked within their departments coordinating hours throughout the year, depending on the work that's accomplished to kind of maximize that. And I guess when I've been kind of thinking about city hall hours, while some may certainly view it as a benefit for employees, the way I've been kind of approaching it is trying to make city hall more accessible. And so if that is what we are trying to approach it in, I do believe that the hours I recommended would do that. That being said, I, it's not certainly an idea that I'm married to. And so if the city council would kind of like to just leave things as they are, I'm certainly open to that as well. This was me attempting to tackle some of the stuff on the visioning list and just kind of get it out there and say, certainly go forward with this or we can leave it as it is. So I guess at that, if this is certainly something the council would still like to consider, I do kind of offer that same recommendation of opening up earlier throughout the week to allow people either before work or contractors getting in here as early as possible. Otherwise, well, I'm certainly all right leaving city hall hours as they are. They've certainly been this way for as long as I'm aware of, so.
If you changed them, how would you, how is that going to be fair amongst the employees? I mean, if you have to still require coverage. So one person gets four tens for a week and then the next person?
So, so I would say if we changed them, this, the change as it is would allow city, if city hall employees basically work from open to close each day, to still work the same amount of hours. There, there would certainly be that, they would, city hall would close early on Fridays and unless a department head has worked something out with an employee here or there that might have a special situation, that would certainly put them at their forty hours when city hall closed. And so there wouldn't have to be any rotating schedules here or there. That, that was the intention kind of of shortening up Friday then to ensure that we didn't have to rotate schedules or that sort of thing while still allowing that earlier time in the morning.
Well, I guess I'm not as worried about the contractors coming in at seven as I am the general public that needs access to it, that might need to come in on a Friday afternoon and just work kind of the eight to four thirty normal hours what they've been used to. I don't know how many general contractors, I mean, building permits, I think have slowed here recently. But I don't know how many contractors come in to do, to get things, but if they have to wait till eight or instead of seven, I'm not worried as much about them.
I'm just wondering, who's, who's it going to benefit if we even change it?
Well, I think it's a perk for our employees, especially, this is just proposed for summer, right? You know, I've worked in situations where some employees may opt to take, you know, that half day on a Monday as opposed to shutting down city hall, you know, on that half day Friday, so that it would still allow coverage for all of those hours. You know, something like that could be hammered out. I think it would still show that we would like to support our employees for the summer and give them some extra time off to enjoy, you know, time with their family or outdoors. You know, they could even take that on a Monday morning so they have a little longer weekend. I mean, there's maybe some more creative ways to kind of think about it, but still have city hall open for our constituents, which, to your point, Sean, I agree. There are constituents that maybe get that half day off on Friday from their job and then they want to come into city hall and be able to, you know, handle a permit. It would be nice to have the, those hours open for them.
Well, as I've said before, I'm comfortable with it on a trial basis. Not knowing what the actual flow of people coming in and out of the building and knowing how many people come in at Friday afternoon.
knowing how many people come in Friday afternoon. We haven't really tabulated that for.
And I I do know staff at, since the last, I know it's only been two Fridays, but staff did kind of keep track these last two Fridays. And it looks like the majority of our Friday afternoon traffic really was u- uh utility payments. Um, someone came in to buy a golf permit, golf course or golf cart permit, that sort of thing. But, yeah, like I said, um this is certainly just something I was bringing forward because it was on the list of ideas, but.
The utility payments, the, I know they they can pay at the window.
Correct.
As opposed to putting it in the box that's outside of city hall?
That is also an option.
Yes, yeah. So is it, we had a couple of people coming in, they just prefer prefer to interact with the person?
Correct, and I I think Robin would probably be able to speak better to that, but I would guess that it's probably the same people every month that just prefer to come in and write a check and um hand it over.
Okay.
The past Friday that we did have a visitor, you know, bills weren't due yet. I think it's just that I'm walking by, I have time, stop in, say hello. So certainly that customer service level, there is the option to do the box. Um, some people might want a receipt if they come in, so.
Thank you.
I've never had a complaint, so I'm kind of whatever you guys want.
I've never had a complaint, but I know that I'll hear from people that'll.
But it's also, it's on a trial basis, so it's not, you know, it's one summer. We're, you're talking from now.
It'd be, it'd be from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Okay, okay. So if we do have a lot of trouble with that, then we could just stop those hours and go back to our normal hours, even if it weren't Labor Day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I think it's just worth worth a try. Um you know, it's it's nice for our employees and um we're still providing uh plenty of hours to be open. But again, if something more, a little more creative can be thought about, you know, so that those hours are full, fully from at least eight to four thirty. I don't know how that is a, gonna be a headache for your scheduling, so that's the only thing.
We've never tried this before?
Not since I've been here. And I guess speaking to longer term staff.
Matt, Bruce, never? Oh.
And like I said, I know at a previous position down southeast Minnesota, it's much more prevalent. Most city halls go to some sort of, but around here, around here is a little less. I think, like, so we did research, uh Northfield does, um and I believe Farbo did, but those are kind of the local ones.
And most are larger cities and they would probably get a lot more traffic, so, yeah. Is it being well received by your employees? To have that Friday afternoon off?
From what I've heard, I guess, it seems to um kind of a hit or miss. I know, I mean, obviously with employees, especially employees with younger kids, there's daycare considerations and having to line that up. Some employees are more open to it, others really like their current daycare schedule and don't know if they can shift. Again, that depends on your daycare employer or whoever's providing the daycare, so with most stuff, there's some that, hey, that would be awesome. There's others that are, this is one more headache that they've got to figure out.
Okay. So taking that in consideration and the offi- those offices close at eleven on Friday, would that individual that has the daycare issues be able to stay and work or?
And I think that that that's just something we'd have to work through. I mean, because there's obviously some jobs that more in-person, front-facing is wo- works better and other jobs where people do cer- have certain jobs, you can step away, so that that would just be something we would certainly have to explore if if that was available.
Is there a concern that some people are going to get this perk and other people aren't gonna be able to take advantage of it?
I would guess that that also is always a concern you have. Um, but I mean, we are already, departments across the city work varying hours. I know our our public works guys start the day earlier and end the day earlier than most, so wastewater actually already work four tens and that sort of issue, so.
This could be a clerical thing. Do you have a action in mind? I mean, it's kind of says the recommendations and just.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the action mine is, um if you're down on page two of the memo, uh just mentions Monday through Thursday, seven AM to four thirty, Friday, seven to eleven. Would be the one that I guess if we wanted to try something, that's the one I would recommend trying. Um, but again, if there's hesitancy or there's there's, it's not to it, we certainly don't need to do it either. And I can remove it from the visioning list.
Any other discussion?
Why was it not, how did that get on the visioning list? I didn't know that was an issue.
I didn't even see it.
So I guess it's been on there for like three years now and it's gotten bumped every year because we've never really gotten to it.
Who would have brought that up, though?
Not me.
So I, I mean, I mean, when the list first got put together, um there was the discussion and um there's also, hey, staff, like, what what do you guys think we should put on this list? And so we brought a whole long list of stuff and brought them all in, and that was one of them that I guess made it through to get on the list and then got bumped for a few years.
For the sake of moving on, um I'm I'll make the motion. Sounds good. So moved.
Uh, Rick, would you clarify what your motion is?
Yeah, you want me to read the whole paragraph?
No, just what it is.
Are, are, yeah, just just to move to summer hours of?
Uh, yeah, well, uh, move to the summer hours temporarily to check out the um how it worked.
Recommended, you, I think, recommended summer hours, Monday through Friday, seven to eleven, to four thirty, and then Friday, seven to eleven?
Yeah, yeah, I can put that on there if you want.
You meant Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, seven to four thirty. Yeah.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? I will second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I heard four zero, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
If there's a problem, we'll just change it.
Um, I would ask, though, if staff could tabulate activity for the new hours, how much activity are we getting at seven o'clock or?
Seven o'clock in the morning to eight?
Yeah, whatever the new frame is.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Keep your mind open for comments on it.
Because I I obviously have employees that we wanna, if we can, the ways we can accommodate that, but we we're really looking from the customer service standpoint, are we actually improving our customer service by doing this or are we not? So are the new hours to the benefit of our community or are they not? And so we can answer that question at the end of this trial period.
Yep, we will do that.
I didn't mean to be so sloppy.
Maybe staff can invite people to come in.
How uh how are we gonna communicate the new hours to?
So, yeah, I guess we'd we'd probably put some signs up on the doors, certainly. Um yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we're able to get the first.
Put it on the website.
First newsletter, but yeah, website, social media, um maybe even get ahold of uh
In the, the radio station.
Utility bill newsletter.
I think the utility bills just went out, was it last week for the new month, but we can get, certainly get them out in the next, next one, but yeah, certainly try.
Well, that's what I'm gonna hear about it is Friday at one when somebody walks in to do something and they didn't.
Pat's gonna publish it, I'm sure.
Yeah, this will be front page news, so.
I don't know that there's any problem since the newspapers are official um communication device of putting something in the newspaper.
I will certainly check to see if there would be an advertising charge.
Well, nevertheless, I mean, that is our, that's our official communication tool of the city of New Break, so that's where we should post it.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll explore all avenues to make sure it gets out. I'm sure someone will stop in on that first Friday and not enjoy the fact that they can't get in the building, but.
That's a good clue.
Two thousand twenty six audit services, Josh or Robin or?
Uh, yes, I'll pass this one off to Robin.
Uh, so in your packet, I've attached a memo and a three-year proposal from ABDO. But the memo states um just how we've been doing our due diligence with other services. We've been with ABDO quite some time. Um, we actually have a great relationship with them. Um, I think they do a really good job. They know our city very well and I think they present well and are able to speak well um to the council after the work that they've done based on the history and the amount of time that they've been with us. But again, going back to that due diligence, what we we would be proposing is that we accept year one of their three-year proposal and then go out for RFP for services um for fiscal year twenty twenty six and beyond. So um auditing the twenty-six year in twenty twenty seven, so that ABDO would still complete the audit for the twenty twenty-five year presenting in twenty twenty-six.
Are there changes in the services offered from from what we had this year till next year?
Nope, it's all the same. It has been for um probably nine years or so that I've been tracking it.
I did read the letter, but is there a justificat- or what is the ar- argument for going five point four percent? Is it? Is there no new services, so there's? Is that what they feel the cost of providing?
Right, yeah. In our last three-year proposal, which I could pull up, because like I said, I have all that data. There was a larger increase in that first year and then a lesser in year two and year three, so.
Was it similar, five percent?
Um, I'll pull it up here if there's other conversation to give me a second to grab the.
The reason I ask obviously is because the inflation rate that we're, everyone is trying to achieve is much less than five percent. And is it, not to say that that's the dictating factor, but it's our job to question.
So in the last three-year proposal that we approved um was for audit years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, the one we just completed. First year, twenty twenty-two, was a six point zero one percent increase over twenty twenty-one, and then it was a two point zero three and a two point zero eight.
Is there a reason that we couldn't go out for RFP right now?
Although it seems early in the calendar year, by the time we go for RFP um and try to get acquainted with a new audit firm, it just feels a little
Rushed?
A little rushed and a little tight. Um, so just to allow ample time um and have a another, I think, like thorough, good working audit, I'd like to allow enough time, should we choose a different vendor out of an RFP to establish our our information and our books with them, so.
Okay.
So no additional services, so the increase in our costs is um exactly the five point four percent increase then?
Correct.
No other additional services, right?
Correct, a true increase of five point four percent, comparing apples to apples. So over the course of three years, the proposal they've presented, this term is twelve point five seven and the last three years prior to that was ten point one one. Combined for all three.
I can see supporting it, given my understanding that the last two years were probably well, well below inflation rates. And um so that that might be some a factor as far as being able to support this.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve twenty s- twenty-six audit services for fiscal year twenty twenty-five with ABDO and then going out for RFP for subsequent years.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions? Those in favor say please, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Please, aye.
Yeah, please, aye. Josh, you taking the next item?
Yes, compensation study review. So I included it in the memo, kind of the general timeline as I foresee. As you remember, we sent out a request for qualifications for doing a compensation study um for the various employees across the city. And council has expressed that they would certainly like at least one of you to be involved kind of in the process. And on May twenty-third, all of the proposals are due from interested parties, and so I was wondering I guess if a council member would like to be involved in the process of reviewing those with Robin and I to bring those um back for a general recommendation to the rest of the council.
Why would it just be one?
We can certainly do more if you would like. Um, I just, without trying to create a super giant group, like one was my thought of and can review and then speak to the council to process, but I think we'd certainly like to have two. If we get more than two, then it opens up the whole process to the public.
Yeah, we don't need, like, I understand that. I just was curious if there's more than one person.
No, we, yeah, we could certainly have two if that's what the council would like to do.
I'd be happy to sit on that.
You need that in action?
Uh, I mean, probably just general agri- general agreement from you guys or how we'd like to do that.
I'd I'd agree to appoint um Sean to it.
So is this just getting down to the final, final person and the council approves the selection, or is it getting down to two or three and the council makes a decision on?
So I would generally see this as we've collected, let's hope that five people submit, that this um group will kind of look through them and say, okay, these are, these are what we got. This is the one that we'd recommend certainly going with. So it would be making a recommendation for someone for the council to approve.
I'm fine with uh if Sean's interested in doing it.
I am too.
Everybody else? Maybe Dwayne?
Sold.
Alright.
Alright, yeah, I will uh, I guess we'll coordinate with you then over those weeks. Cause I'd likely s- send you copies and then we'd probably set up interview dates then for the ones that were.
Except Friday afternoons because you're not working.
Except for Friday afternoon. Well, city hall's closed. I'll probably send you.
I'm kidding, I had to get that in there.
Saturday mornings at six AM.
Perfect.
Okay.
Police Building Construction Administration approval.
Uh, yes, uh, I was talking with John.